Previously, by emailing or calling City Hall earlier. If you did so, we already have your name in the queue and the clerk will call on you to speak when it is your time in the queue. This applies to citizens who are outside at City Hall and on the phone. If you've registered with the city clerk ahead of time, you will be speaking in the first group of speakers regardless of if you are calling in or are outside City Hall. There are people wishing to make public comments who are standing outside of City Hall. These commenters will be heard after pre-register. Before the phone-in call. If you are outside of City Hall, do as you feel about yourself and give it to the city employee who is outside. If you have not done so yet, please do so now. When it is your turn to speak, you will be escorted inside, make your comment at the podium in front of the speaker. You will enter at the south side of City Hall and exit the north side of City Hall. If you wish to offer a public comment, do not notify the clerk ahead of time. You are calling in. Ask to speak up in this order right now. We will call on everyone with the last names A through D, then E through H, then I through L, M through Q, R through U, then V through Z. Your last name is A through D. You wish to make a public comment, state your name right now. Previously muted yourself, press star six to unmute yourself and give your name. So, A through D, please speak now.
It sounds like someone has their television on.
No, it sounds like someone called into the meeting on a speaker phone. If you are on a phone, you should not be on speaker phone. You should be on a landline or sitting on your cellphone in a quiet room. You cannot contact anyone that is outside, does not need to be on their phone to hear us through speaker outside. It got very quiet, thank you. Do we need the city attorney to repeat everything that she said?
I think we should, if you don't mind.
Good. She's going to call in instead of doing it through the microphone. Going to call in. They're letting her into the meeting now.
My name is Reenie Butler and I am the Wood River City Attorney. I will be helping to facilitate the meeting tonight because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are holding this meeting by telephone and allowing public comments to be heard at City Hall because of the anticipated high call volume of citizens who may wish to comment. Present at City Hall are City Manager Jim Schneider, City Clerk Stacy Erman, Parks and Recreation Director Jason Woody, and Police Chief Brad Wells. Calling in tonight are Mayor Cheryl McGuire, City Council Members Michael Anderson, Leroy Duncan, and Tom Stalcup. Also calling in are our department heads, Public Works Director Steve Talan, and Finance Director Chris Sabrino. I'm going to pause for a moment, we're having technical difficulties. I would ask that everyone who wishes to speak tonight, whether that is council members, department heads, or public comments, please announce your name before you speak unless the clerk is calling roll on a vote, and that is self-explanatory. Because there is a high volume of callers, we ask that each of you mute your phones right now by pushing your phone's mute button or by pressing star six right now. This is to eliminate the background noise that we are hearing. We also urge all citizens to be in a quiet place when they make their public comments, away from barking dogs and all noise, and it is quite disruptive to these meetings. If you are disconnected inadvertently from this meeting, please feel free to call back in. We will let you in. If you wish to comment under citizen comments, you should have informed the clerk previously by emailing or calling City Hall earlier. If you did so, we already have your name in the queue and the clerk will call on you to speak when it is your time in the queue. This applies to citizens who are outside City Hall and citizens who are on the phone. If you've registered with the city clerk ahead of time, you will be speaking in the first group of speakers regardless of if you are calling in or if you are outside at City Hall. There are people wishing to make public comments who are standing outside of City Hall. These commenters will be heard after the pre-registered callers and before the phone-in callers. If you are outside of City Hall, you should have filled out a comment form and give it to the city employee. If you have not done so yet, please do so now. When it is your turn to speak, you will be escorted inside to make your comment at the podium in front of the speaker phone. You will enter at the south side of City Hall and exit on the north side of City Hall. If you wish to offer a public comment and are calling in and did not notify the clerk ahead of time, we will ask of you to speak up in this order right now. We will call on everyone with the last names A through D, then E through H, then I through L, M through Q, R through U, then V through Z. If your last names begin with A through D and you wish to make a public comment, please state your name, and if you have previously muted yourself, push star six to unmute yourself. So, A through D, please speak up to register to speak at the meeting tonight. Anyone with the last name A through D that wishes to speak tonight? Okay, anyone with the last names E through H who wishes to speak tonight? And make sure that if you're trying to unmute yourself, press star six. Okay? Are there any callers with the last name I beginning with I through L?
Thank you Jenny, we got you.
Thank you.
Any other I through L? Are there any callers with the last name beginning M through Q who wish to give a Make sure you press star six if you need to unmute yourself. Any callers with the last name beginning R through U? Okay, any callers with the last name beginning V through Z? Are there any callers who wish to give comments tonight? If so, press star six and we'll get your name. So far, we only have one call-in person who wishes to make a comment. Who hasn't already registered. Anyone else? Okay, please note, all public comments will be limited to three minutes pursuant to city policy. All citizens will be muted by the city now. If you are making a citizen comment, under citizen comments, you will press star six when you are instructed to do so by the clerk. Muting you does not mean that you, as a citizen, cannot hear the meeting. It means that the other meeting participants cannot hear the noise from your phone line. If you unmute yourself and there is noise from your phone line, you will be disconnected from the meeting after the second disruption. This is necessary because of the excessive amount of background noises that we are encountering during these meetings. We appreciate your patience and understanding. And now, I will turn it over to the mayor to open the April 19, 2021, City Council Meeting.
Good evening. Since there are so many people on the phone, we'll try to take this a little slower because there is a delay. We will open the April 19, 2021, Wood River City Council Meeting to order. I will recite the pledge of allegiance. If you will recite this to yourself silently, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please? I'm first going to ask all the department heads and city council that are on the phone to please sit still and do not move paper while you're on here because we can hear you moving paper around. Thank you. Anderson?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Stalcup?
Here.
McGuire?
Here.
Unmute yourself. Unmute yourself. Go to your mute button.
Item two, please. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 5, 2021, as printed.
Anderson motions.
Stalcup, so moved.
Item two has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Call the roll, please. Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Item three, please. Approval of the minutes. I'm going to wait because there's like a wind behind someone. Again, I'm going to ask if anyone is outdoors to please move inside, to please sit still. Any movement at all causes a lot of interference. Item three, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 14, 2021, as printed.
I'll make that motion.
Anderson, second.
Item three has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Call the roll, please. Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
Yes.
McGuire? Item four, please. Approval of the bills submitted for payment for the period April 2 to April 15, 2021,
Anderson, motion.
Duncan, I'll second that motion.
Item four has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please? Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
Yes.
McGuire? Item five, please. Approval of the financial statement ending March 31, 2021. You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Duncan, second that.
Item five has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please? Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Item six, please. Okay, the first person on the speaker list is Bill Detmers. I believe you're calling in from home, so make sure you star six yourself in.
If any of you are shocked by what's going on tonight, I hope that you get over that shock because I was not surprised. In fact, a week ago, I forecasted that Jim Schneider was going to be fired. I told several people that text this was going to happen. Sure enough, last Thursday, told Jim Schneider between 1:00 and 2:00 PM he was going to be fired. I think it's still probably going to happen. The mayor is bitter because she lost her election and now she wants to exert as much control as she can, and it looks like she's trying to inflict as much damage and pain on us as she possibly can. It doesn't look like she cares what we want or what we think. It looks like she's just trying to show us he's boss. I know there was a problem with the mayor last year when she denied that the city was running a $2 million budget deficit in an op-ed piece, so I asked her to resign. Shortly after that, she attempted to keep me off the air at a radio broadcast where I was announcing that a petition drive was going to be started to save the roundhouse and stop reckless spending. I can only imagine how mad the mayor was when our referendum passed three to one. And council, I want you to pay particular attention to what I'm about to say here. In October, Mayor McGuire altered a letter from the YMCA in which she inserted my name to make it appear that the YMCA was criticizing me, and she had this letter published in the newspaper, all in attempt to stop our referendum. I want the city to know that my attorney is on the phone line tonight. My intention is to the mayor and the city for this act of defamation. Just two weeks ago, Mayor McGuire suffered the worst defeat of any incumbent I have ever seen, and what she's doing tonight, ramming through this rec center that she has been told not to build at this time and appoint a councilperson that didn't run in the first place just to make sure that Tom Stalcup can't put his policies into place. Then, over this past weekend, Mayor McGuire threatened to attempt to undermine and disrupt the police chief and his authority. There is no limit to the damage Mayor McGuire is willing to cause as she leaves. If she can't control it, she wants to destroy it. Mayor McGuire, I ask you again to resign your position immediately. If Mayor McGuire will not resign, the council should not follow the mayor down this self-destructive path as it will only come back to haunt you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Detmers. The second person on the list is Sarah Sladick. I believe you're calling in from home as well. If you would please star six yourself in if you have not already. Sladick, are you there?
Okay, yes, I am. This is Sarah Sladick. Okay. The citizens of Wood River went to the polls last fall regarding the proposed new recreation center to the tune of around $7 million, $8 million plus. These voting citizens asked to stop this reckless spending. Last fall, it was loud and clear that this be put on hold. No feasibility study has been done. No input was welcomed from the citizens as to what they wanted to push ahead. Thirteen days ago, thirteen days ago, these voting citizens went back to the polls again and replaced the mayor who refused to listen to the citizens of Wood River last fall. Now, tonight, you want to push forward one last time, push for a rec center that has the hallmark of Wood River's newest albatross. You want to resume the spending for this. You disregard what the citizens want. Apparently, your real concern is for yourself in this manner. Now, you want to add that $414,000, $103,800 back to the 2122 budget for these design processes. Somebody is interrupting and I cannot think.
Yes, why don't you stop for just a moment, Sarah? We are going to re-mute people who are unmuting themselves. There is no reason for you to unmute yourself if you are not speaking. Your background noise and the wind where you're standing is coming through. The only person that should be speaking or making noise is Mrs. Sladick. When the person mutes you, do not unmute yourself. You are not speaking now. Just Mrs. Sladick.
We're happy to be here.
Well...
I'll go ahead. Anyway, um...
Okay, Mrs. Sladick, are you still there?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. You want the city of Wood River to be authorized to execute this $2.5 million grant for construction. You're leaving this city in turmoil as it is. Why add this to it? Why? Because you can. You care not for the city you want to further divide and destroy. Now, with the city council in your pocket for two weeks anyway, you want to ram this through. Why did Mr. Stanley wait till now to resign? I can tell you why, because you, at your last meeting as mayor, you can appoint a new council member who has been not been publicly vetted. Who is she? What are her views regarding this city? What are her views regarding the rec center? We citizens deserve to know who sits on our council. Who is making these decisions for our city? But no, we're not entitled to this information. Why? Thirteen days ago, since our election, we had six candidates run for two council seats. Why didn't, why did not one of these candidates get put on the board now? Why did not your candidate that you want to seat tonight, why didn't she run? Thirteen days since the election, she needed to be public with her views. No, it didn't meet your agenda, and I'm very sorry about that. But you know, in closing, I'd like to add, our streets are deteriorating, our sidewalks are horrible, our sewers stink, and half the time are non-functioning, our basements leak in this city, but we're going to have a multimillion dollar rec center sitting on Wood River Avenue that the city of Wood River cannot afford. If present council members vote for this, I guarantee you, we will meet you back at the polls. Thank you.
That's your time, Mrs. Sladick. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is outside. Mary Roberts, if you will go to the door, someone will let you in to come in and speak. All you have to do is speak into this. This will catch everything. You can speak clearly into that.
Can I speak my name? Hi, my name is Mary Roberts. I want to say that I do not want the items seven, eight, and nine on the agenda for the proposed recreation centers for tonight's meeting to pass. To save the roundhouse and to stop reckless spending and Tom Stalcup for mayor passed three to one, and now Mayor McGuire is trying to take our voice away and do what she wants. There were two votes showing her and the city council members what the citizens in Wood River wanted, and they should be listened to. I hope Mike Anderson and Leroy Duncan vote against her proposals and listen to what the citizens of Wood River want. They are all supposed to be working for us and the good of our city. There is nothing in this agenda allocating money for infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, and sewers and water lines. This is what the citizens have asked for, not to spend $8 million plus on a rec center without a feasibility study. With items 12 and 13, she is also trying to stack the vote against our new mayor, Tom Stalcup. I don't believe Sonia should be approved for the council seat when there were four other candidates that didn't win but put their time, energy, and love for our city out there when she didn't. I have heard a lot of underhanded tactics that Mayor McGuire has done recently, and I am ashamed that someone in her position would revert to trying to harm the city that she swore to protect. Our legacy is going to be the worst mayor that Wood River has ever had. Underhanded tactics to harm the welfare of the city and not listening to her citizens and doing what she wants to benefit herself.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary. The next speaker is also outside, Rick Jones. If you will come to the door, you will be let in.
My name's Rick Jones. I would like to thank all the current council and the mayor for their service, but now I'm asking that they look at their questionable actions on tonight's council agenda. With such a short time left that the new council is seated, it's prudent to examine the current issues regarding potential illegal and certainly improper Open Meetings Act violations. With this purported vindictive, malicious, and self-serving conspiracy to obstruct the future council from governing the city in a progressive manner, I ask that all members now table tonight's agenda that will affect and encumber the newly-elected city council and the residents both for unwanted and unvoted on representation and extended financial burdens to all residents. Outgoing council members and the current mayor have been shown by an overwhelming and absolute vote the displeasure of the citizens and the guidance and action this council has taken. For example, the resounding political defeat and the overwhelming defeat of the proposed new rec center. Yet, the mayor, in defiance, presses forward the incumbent's taxpayers with additional debt in order to complete the unwanted rec center. To accomplish this, she wants to pack the board with her handpicked farcian rec board members who did not even run and show interest in the recently finished election. The rec center initial cost projection was S and B to be $6 to $8 million or more. That is above and beyond the state's grant participation of $2.5 million. All farcenter that with COVID may never be able to be optimized. All this with no... All this with no completed feasibility study, no projected operating budget, no staffing requirements, no insurance costs, no utility costs, no daily maintenance costs for parking lot maintenance, no outside building costs, and so many other areas of undisclosed costs and problems yet to be researched and discovered. But, and most of all, acting in a self-serving and in-your-face defiance of the voters, all for her glorification. So to the council, in order to agree with and represent the people, you must table the new council member appointment as well as the rec center acceptance. Why should two members who have been voted out rule beyond their expulsion? Councilman Leroy Duncan, as the only remaining elected council member to be included in the next seated council, make up for your misguided participation and support of the current administration. You can table this and take the time needed to both research and make the best choice for the new council member appointment.
That's your three minutes. The next speaker is Kristen McCutcheon. I believe you're also outside, Kristen McCutcheon.
My name is Kristen McCutcheon, and I am concerned with some actions of Mayor Cheryl Maguire in the past few weeks. The secret meeting that took place at the VFW is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. No notice, and the entire city council was not present. The decision in the meeting was not in the city's best interest. I ask the council to make decisions based on what the citizens of Wood River have spoken and won. Sonia Hagman has spread misinformation on social media to sway votes to Mayor Maguire. Sonia is also very adamant to the start of the recreation center project. She should not be made councilwoman, as the most recent election showed voters wanted to withhold on spending on the rec center. It is our hope Mayor-elect Starkup choose a replacement for councilwoman, or for councilman, Chris Stanley. I urge council members to also reject the motion for her to take oath today as councilwoman and to reject the motion to move forward with the recreation center until other priorities are met. I also ask that Mayor Cheryl Maguire resign effective immediately due to a violation of the Open Meetings Act, lying to citizens' inflammatory remarks on social media, violating her oath of office with her decisions. Finally, for not acting as an elected official should by following what voters have expressed in a clear want and need going forward. Thank you.
The next speaker is actually calling in on the phone, Sandy Detmers. If you'll star six yourself in. Ms. Detmers, are you there yet?
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Detmers?
I am speaking tonight... Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Proceed.
I am speaking tonight to express my concern about what is happening to this city. I grew up in Wood River and wanted to make it my home again. I always thought it was a good place to live. That's why my husband and I built our house here in two thousand and five, but the actions of Mayor Maguire and this council are causing me to question that decision. I do not understand the reasons for the actions this council is taking up here tonight. In two thousand and eighteen, the city held several town hall meetings to determine how to move the city forward. A study was prepared and was sent to the council. The study said residents wanted infrastructure taken care of first, then a rec center with a swimming pool. This information was used to promote a one percent sales tax that was to solve all our problems. However, after the sales tax was approved, the swimming pool secretly disappeared, and the roundhouse was to be torn down. Then in January two thousand and twenty, the mayor and the council approved two no-bid contracts for over one million dollars to make sure the rec center was locked in and built. We then started our campaign to save the roundhouse and stop the reckless spending. We collected almost nine hundred signatures and forced a vote on this. In September two thousand and twenty, the city council passed a resolution to save the roundhouse. Well, sorta, maybe. On November third, two thousand and twenty, over three thousand residents, by a three to one margin, voted to approve the referendum. Finally, we were told by this council that they heard us and took funds out of the budget for the rec center. Then two weeks ago, the mayor lost her reelection by more than three to one, and another incumbent councilman lost his seat because they refused to listen last year to what we were telling them what we wanted. Now with less than two weeks to go in her administration, Mayor Maguire wants to create division with our community by putting the rec center back into the budget. She is bitter and trying to make us pay for our decision to remove her from office and to try and maintain control of this council after she is gone. I strongly encourage each council member to seriously consider what they are doing here tonight. The impact of your decision will last for a long time, but no matter what happens, Wood River will survive. However, the damage you may cause to your reputation will last with you for the rest of your life.
Thank you, Ms. Detmers. The next person is outside, Betty Meiser. If you'll come to the door.
Hi, my name's Betty Meiser. I was always told, if you want to change, you need to vote to make your voices heard. Well, we did. We voted, and it was overwhelming as to what the citizens of Wood River wanted. But no, that didn't work, because the mayor and some of the council thinks we were confused and we didn't know what we were voting for. I know exactly what I was voting for. Then the mayor election came around, and again, the citizens voted eight hundred plus for Tom and only two hundred plus for the mayor. When running, you said you would listen to the people. Well, you lost, and you lost big. And now you want to go ahead and put the rec center back on the agenda, even though this is not what the majority of our citizens want. I have come or called into every council meeting since January two thousand and twenty, and I cannot believe the audacity of this group. I think any items on the agenda tonight pertaining to the rec center should be tabled, and the appointment of Sonia should not happen. If Sonia wanted to be on the council, she should have ran herself. What you are doing is just spiteful and mean. It's a slap in the face to the good citizens of Wood River. This town has finally woke up, and we won't forget. In the future, I will no longer listen to what the people, what the politicians say. I will watch what they do. Behavior does not lie. Thank you.
The next person is on the phone, Don McMaster. If you will star six yourself in. Mr. McMaster, are you there yet? It takes a while sometimes. Mr. McMaster, if you press star six, you'll get into the meeting. Are you there, Mr. McMaster? Okay, we're going to put Mr. McMaster down at the bottom. He called in earlier to give his name, so we'll put him back in later. The next person is here outside, Erin Niemeyer. If you will come to the door.
Just speak, microphone. Hello, my name's Erin Niemeyer. I'm here tonight because what's going on has to stop. I'm going to beg you city council members to stop this and table everything. Ms. Maguire will stop at nothing to push her agenda through. The rec center's been voted down. She's been voted out, but she's still pushing. She shouldn't be out of point if I had the city council, because the city council first she's appointing didn't run. As everybody before me has said, she didn't put the legwork in. The way that she's trying to point has fought tooth and nail and defended Ms. Maguire. Ms. Maguire does not have us citizens' best interests at heart. She's put this rec center back in. It's not what the people want. The people want a different rec center than she has in mind, and they don't want it until the past issues are addressed. Our sewers back up every time it rains into people's basements. People just shouldn't have to live like that. It's been like that for years. I have with me a copy of a police report Mayor Maguire filed on me yesterday stating that, uh, "I threatened her life." That's a lie. I have a CD of a body cam where she threatened to release privileged information, classified information. That's not, that's not right. She should be in jail for this stuff, just like the, the meeting at the VFW. That's illegal. You can have all these meetings outside of City Hall. Yet she does what she wants. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next person is also outside, Vic Hankhouse. If you could come to the door.
Hi, my name is Vic Hankhouse. I've been a resident for, in Wood River for thirty, over thirty-five years. I'm here to request the board members to table the budget and the appointee of the board member until after the mayor's election, when the mayor's sworn in. The residents have spoken through the election. I ask you not to be a party to this type of backdoor antics and, uh... Anyway, I'm, I'm a little upset over this thing. Like I said, I, I've talked to people in this, in this city, and it's just, it's not right what's happening. And the, the board has a pro, had a, a chance to do something about this. We hope that, uh, the residents of Wood River do not lose faith in what the politicians have done here. They're, they're destroying our city, as she is, I should, and the mayor is, and some of the council members also. If the mayor is looking to put her name on a building or something, she ought to go and have an arch made over here off of Route Three to the road that leads to the trash spot that, because that's what she's doing. She's trashing this city before she leaves. Thank you.
The next person is calling in, Dave Landry. If you would star six yourself in, Dave Landry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, he's here.
Hi, I'm, can you hear me? Hi, I'm, I'm Pastor Dave Landry. I, I was born and raised, uh, in Wood River, and right now, I am so angry that it's, it's beside myself to, to even, um, want to speak, so therefore, I wrote something down, very short, to express my, my feelings about what's going on here today. The people of Wood River spoke. They voted. Why are you sabotaging the Wood River people and what they, what they voted for in the elections? I thought that your office was a place where you wanted to do the will of the people. I thought you were for Wood River. I thought you wanted to be for Wood River, and I thought you were for the people. That's why you were elected. We're only a few days from having a new mayor, and I want you to know, and I want Leroy Duncan to understand, you got two years left. I, this appointed position, if it goes forward, I want you to understand, Sonia, you've got two years left. I fought with this for several years, and I am personally going to make an attempt to run for city council. And I'm going to do everything in my power as a pastor over the churches that's in this area to speak for the next two years to reveal the dirty antics that went on in this city. And I'm very, very upset about it, and I pray and I hope that you take another look at what you're doing, because your legacy is being ruined, as well as the legacy of Leroy Duncan and Chris Stanley and Michael Anderson. And it's time to eat some crow, eat some pie, and, and say I'm sorry, and move on and allow the council that is coming into office and the new mayor to do what they need to do for this city of Wood River, and that's all I have.
The next one is outside, Jackie Koneski. Jackie Koneski, come to the door, please.
Did I say it right? I would like to address this, and my name is Jackie Koneski. I'd like to address this to the council members. The city of Wood River elected you, and you have a responsibility to represent them and do what the citizens wish. We had an election last fall, and the citizens said that they want to keep the roundhouse and not build a rec center. Everyone wants good sewers, streets, and sidewalks. Ask yourself, would you want sewer problems in your house, or would you like rough, bumpy streets and sidewalks, or holes in the streets? Everyone would benefit from the good sewers, streets, and sidewalks. Not everyone will use the rec center. Would you want to move to a town where the infrastructure is deteriorating, and even if, if there is, even if you did have a rec center? If we can take care of the infrastructure first and then consider the rec center, but only if you don't make our city broke in doing this, or saddle us with more taxes to build a rec center. To the council, people put their faith in you and gave you their vote. Please honor the majority of what the citizens' wishes are. Take care of the infrastructure first. Let your incoming mayor, Mayor, Mayor Starkup, have a chance to do what he wishes, what the citizens want. Cheryl Maguire has had a chance, and we don't want her agenda. It's our, it's your responsibility to do what the citizens have asked you to do. That's it.
The next person is outside, Dan Donahoo. If you'll come to the door, Dan. You don't have to be here, but not out here, so about in the middle.
Two years ago, okay, two years ago, city voters approved a 1% sales tax referendum for capital projects and a new recreation center. The estimated cost of the facility will be funded by a portion of the new sales tax revenue, and approximately one-third by the city's successful grant application to the only department of natural resources. The two and a half million dollar grant is earmarked only for the recreation center. In other words, either use it or lose it. The mayor-elect has stated that the grant would be approved, it would be a game changer. The grant application has eighteen letters of support, two state legislators, four area mayors, four local school superintendents, the Wood River Police and Fire Chief, and other agency directors. I'm gonna share some of their comments. Wood River Police Chief Brad Wells, "I have been asked to write letters in support of different projects over the years, but the letter I'm writing today in support of the recreation center for this community stands out as the most important one I have written. I fully support city efforts to support a facility designed to revitalize our community." Fire Chief Wade Stallhead, "The proposed facility would positively influence children for generations." Wood River Hartford Superintendent Patrick Anderson, "Providing our students with facilities that would help them grow physically, mentally, and being civic-minded is important. The facilities will help our chances of making a true difference in the lives of students and the community. Because many of our students do not have the same advantages of those in other more affluent communities, the need is great." Roxanna School Superintendent, "We live in a region with high poverty, and a recreation center will improve the quality of life and make a major positive impact on our area." Riverbinder Family Ministries Executive Director, "I believe this center will be a great incentive for new families looking to move into our area, and I also believe that it will provide a place for our youth to learn positive team-building and healthy alternatives to other choices." And Wood River Quanis Club Director, "We fully support a facility designed to revitalize our community, and according to Quanis' mission, we support a project that is dedicated to changing our community one child at a time." As for the roundhouse, "Generations of kids in the fifties, sixties, and seventies have fond memories of gathering at the school or after football and basketball games at Jive Land. My wife, class of seventy-four, and a member of the Jive Land Board, and myself, class of seventy-two, have many Jive Land memories. One of my memories was the first time I met my wife, almost fifty years ago, on a park bench next to the roundhouse. So I asked the council, why not create new memories for future generations with the construction of a new multipurpose rec center? During the past election, the common campaign slogan was, 'Revitalize downtown.' I can't think of a better way of attracting families to the city."
The next person is outside, Chuck Johansson, will you go to the door, please?
Dude, they have so many people speaking tonight, look. Because the mayor...
We can hear you, whoever that is speaking, into your phone.
Hi, I'm Chuck Johansson. I'm Chuck Johansson. I've been a resident here since my family drugged me down here at four years old screaming. The thing I want to talk about is trust and the lack of trust. It goes back as far from me when I started questioning Wood River's trust, is when they passed a tax on utilities as a temporary tax because they needed cash flow. That's been over twenty years, and we've still got that same tax, and it's increasing. This past year, the city, in this county, raised it to the maximum amount the state allows. When I was talking to Ameren, they said that you are the only municipality that's done this. So there's a money issue. Then you did the dog and pony show at Belt Park. I got invited to that, but what really shocked me was when a couple came into the third meeting and asked the facilitator, "Why didn't we know about this? We saw it posted, you've had other meetings." And the mediator said, "We invited people that pull with us, not against us." So that's a big trust factor. We all started thinking, "This is already decided. It's already decided, and we're just here to validate what they're doing." And that 1% sales tax was a trust that they wouldn't increase, with this project, they wouldn't increase our property tax, because they knew that they had to increase our property tax the first of the year to the maximum amount, at 4.9%, that the state allows without going to a referendum in the book. So this all comes to the trust. With the Open Meeting Act and the VFW, we knew that was going on all this past year because the members there were texting people outside and saying, "The mayor's here talking to Leroy." So that's another trust factor. We don't have that trust anymore. And if you don't have trust, you don't have a bond with your city officials you elect, so you have to make change. And with the appointment of people that the city does not vote on, again, that's a trust factor. The one thing the city could possibly do to resolve this is table everything and wait till the new city council sits, don't make any changes to get that trust back in the voter. For the ones that didn't get reelected, there was a reason for that because the public didn't trust the people that were nominated by our current mayor. It's all about trust, and if we don't have the trust, we won't have a community, and we've gotta get that trust. The rec center, it was gonna have one gym, it's gonna have, now it's gonna have two gyms. When you can't even get our grade school, fourth and fifth and sixth grade teams together because of lack of participation. The biggest lack of participation is organized sports in this country. It's more one-on-one, and this facility doesn't offer that for a child, it just has rooms. So with that, I want, I would like for our council to really reconsider everything that's on the board and table it.
The next person is on the phone, Mike Roper, if you will star six yourself in on the phone. Let us know when you've joined in, Mr. Roper.
Hello?
Yes, sir, you are live now.
All right, thank you. I was just calling in to take my three minutes to tell the mayor how horrible a job she's done once more, and to give people play-by-play. I'm coming from a ballgame, and I'm a sweaty, so I didn't get out of my car, but every time people say that, there's people standing outside, I'm watching them clap outside of City Hall. So again, Cheryl, you'll go down in history as the worst mayor ever. My next comments are specifically to Leroy Duncan. I believe you to be an honorable man, and you need to take this opportunity to table these items. Don't push through with Cheryl and Anderson's agenda, they've been voted out by the people. So take your time, table this, do a feasibility study, give the people what they want. This grant does not have to be pushed through right now, there's not a time limit. Once it is approved, there's a two-year time limit that it has to be built in, so the clock would start immediately if you do approve it. So again, I'll close early by just saying again, Cheryl, worst mayor ever, congratulations. Have a good day.
The next speaker is outside, Linda Walters, if you will come to the door, please.
Good evening all. First, I wanna just say I appreciate all the eloquent speakers we've had tonight, and they've had a lot of good points. I enjoyed listening. And Mary Roberts, boy, you nail how I feel. Thanks for letting me speak, and I'm sorry if I raced through due to the fear of running out of time. First, I want to congratulate Mayor McGuire for your years of service. I can't believe, like a lot of the folks do, that you are so, that you would be malicious. It can't be, that can't be what's behind your motive, and doing some of the things you do, but anyway. I do believe you spent considerable time and energy trying to do right by the city. It might not always look that way, it's hard being on a board. I don't always agree with your actions, but mostly respect that you must be doing what you think is right. But now is the time to support our new mayor, Tom Stalkup, and we all need to wish him the very best. I would like to think that if the new mayor needed to call upon your experience, you would be willing to assist for the benefit of the city. Again, thank you, Mayor McGuire, for your years of service, enjoy your time off. Since I have been attending, whether in person or by calling, my biggest difficulty has been trying to understand the process that is being used by the council. Once at a meeting, you see what has already been decided upon. If you make arrangements beforehand, you are allowed to talk. What I don't see is what good does it do to talk? If I have questions they aren't answered, nor is anyone else's. Not too long ago, a meeting or so back, I did hear an issue brought up by mayor that Mayor McGuire responded to towards the end of the meeting. This is the first time in the past two years that this has occurred. I have always felt there has been a lack of transparency or information for the general public. Again, at what point do the council members and the mayor gather information and feedback? When do you know and learn what might not be acceptable to the citizens of Wood River? A good example would be the added expense folks are paying on their monthly water sewer bills that they paid when billed two months. It appears everything gets decided, put on the agenda, and voted on to make it official, and citizens are expected to suck it up. I will be alone, in my opinion, on the next issue, but that's okay. As far as I'm concerned, the state of Illinois is in enough trouble, the millions of dollars for the new rec center should be returned. Darn, bye, everybody.
The next person is outside, Tom Kane, if you will come to the door, Mr. Kane.
I'm Tom Kane. First thing I'd like to say is, I think it's a sad state when a meeting of this magnitude is taking place tonight, and you guys didn't feel the necessity to be here and look the citizens in the face when you're getting ready to make decisions that's gonna negatively affect this whole city. There's many citizens outside in the cold, standing there to voice their concerns, you felt the need to sit at home at war. There's future and past councilmen standing outside. But I'll move on, I'll move on from that since I can't look you in the eyes. But what I want to tell you is, I've heard things about feasibility studies, and I've heard 1% sales tax, but you know what? Last November, it was decided by a three-to-one margin from the citizens of this town that the roundhouse would stay, and the recreation center would not move forward. I'm not sure what you don't understand about that. That supersedes any other thing that has taken place when the citizens of this city voted that, it's done. And what you're getting ready to do tonight is a travesty, I'm telling you that. Now, I've only got about another minute, but I am gonna say that we've been blessed, if that's what you want to call it, with probably the worst mayor that this city has ever seen in its life. She's incapable of doing anything right, actually, she's incapable of doing anything, period. But to the two council members, you still have the night, tonight, to make it right. Do not follow this lady down this dark road that you're getting ready to take with this city. Let our new mayor and our new councils work and try to make this city a better place to live. I'm asking you, do not go down this road. That's it, thank you.
The next person to speak is outside, Jeremy Plank, if you will come to the door, please.
My name is Jeremy Plank, and I'll be sworn in as city councilman early next month. Last November, voters in Wood River weighed in on an important ballot initiative, asking, "Shall the city of Wood River, Illinois, save the existing roundhouse as a center for recreation and community use and suspend capital spending on the planned recreation center project?" Over seventy percent of the voters said yes, save the roundhouse and do not spend our tax dollars on a new recreation center. Just a few short weeks ago, voters made their voices clear again, they want a new direction for our city, and they want more transparency in city operations. And here we are today, we have a lame duck city council taking out two agenda items regarding the future of the city that are absolutely contrary to the priorities laid out by our residents. First, the mayor and city council are trying to spend millions on a new recreation center. Second, the mayor and city council wants to select a new member of the city council that voters have never had a chance to weigh in on. We just had an election, yet the person under consideration for this council did not come forward to be vetted by an election, and voters didn't have a chance to consider her. Folks, I ran for city council to bring accountability and transparency to our city government. The current officials cling to power, trying to steer the city in a direction voters already overwhelmingly rejected. I urge the mayor and the city council members to reconsider their agenda items today. Let's start out on good, solid footing, and not further erode the city's financial position. Let's allow the new mayor, Tom Stalkup, to make decisions he was elected to make and build a team reflective of our new direction. I appreciate all your consideration as we move forward in a positive, more transparent direction. Thank you.
The next speaker is also outside, Mary Paling. Mary, come to the door, please.
My name is Mary Paling. I have lived in Wood River all of my life. When I was of age, I voted in city elections. Never do I remember Wood River having this much trouble with a mayor or council member. It appears that in order to get your way, tonight you're pushing along items that you could have left up to the new mayor. You should remember that the rec center can wait till other issues are taken care of. For instance, the broken sidewalks in the streets that have craters opening up in them, weeks go by without them being fixed. I have heard that Councilman Stanley resigned due to moving out of the area. I would have thought he could... I would have thought he could have attended tonight's meeting, but instead it appears that he may have vacated his office early so that you could appoint a new person of your choosing. Why not let the new ma- mayor choose a replacement? It is sad and embarrassing for Wood River. I support Tom Stalkup and wish him luck in straightening out this mess.
The next person is outside, Dolores Quarter. If you'll come to the door, please. Whoever's on the phone, we can hear you.
I want to know why the mayor- sorry, I had scribbled. Why Mayor McGuire appointed a new council member who didn't run for the election? One of the people running for the city council should have gotten this decision. They are the people who campaigned. They went door to door, meeting their fellow citizens of whatever. They spent money for signs and other expenses. They should have had the opportunity to be on the city council. This is just one of Mayor McGuire's under- many underhanded schemes. I am so happy the mayor is gone soon. Mayor McGuire is gone soon. You are the worst mayor of whatever we have ever had.
The next speaker is on the phone, Jenny Johnson. Jenny Johnson, if you will star six yourself into the call, please. Let us know when you're in, Jenny.
Hi, this is Jenny Johnson.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay. I am speaking today in favor of the recreation center. As a child, many of my memories centered around park and recreation events. As a parent, I feel like our children deserve the same opportunities. Children's interests have changed over the years, and our park and rec have done a great job trying to coordinate those efforts. However, our current building does not facilitate those activities, and we are constantly borrowing gym time from other municipalities. As many families have traveled to other cities to participate in some sports activities, I feel it is important that we build a facility that will attract our new families to not only live here, but to be homeowners and have a future impact on our growing community. I believe that Mayor-elect Stalkup and the council have a great opportunity in front of them. As a parent of a school-age student, uh, or children, I'm sorry, who participate in many sports, we often have to seek gym time from other cities in order for our children to get appropriate practice time. Our children deserve better than this. I'm asking the council, both sitting and incoming, whether this is tabled or passed through tonight, to please look at the rec center with fresh eyes. It is our responsibility not only to hear those voices of those who speak out, but also of the voices of those who can't speak. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The last person, I'm still looking for Don McMaster. If you are on the phone, Mr. McMaster, will you please star six yourself into the meeting so that you can speak, Mr. McMaster? Are you there, Mr. McMaster? I'm going to go with Mr. McMaster was not able to call in. Are there any other callers on the phone who would like to give a comment? Please star six yourself in and announce your name. We want to make sure everyone is heard. Okay, there's no one left outside that wishes to speak, so the next section will be me reading the comments that have been emailed in. The first one is from Brad Gray.
Hi, my name is Brad Gray. I'm 41 years old, and I have pretty much lived my whole life in Wood River, give or take a few years. I remember playing soccer at Bendo Soccer Field, basketball at the high school basketball courts, and going to the Wood River pool as I grew up. I also remember, from as long as I can remember, flood issues in and around the area, along with road and sidewalk issues, same as all communities. I just want to let the mayor and the city council members know that I appreciate what they have done over the past few years. You have thought outside the box and took a 1% sales tax to vote, and it passed, which has allowed you to address and start working on roads, curbs, sidewalks, sewer issues, two retention ponds to bring the upwards of 180-plus houses out of the floodplain, saving the residents up to $1,500 a year, if not more. And you've received a $2.5 million grant to go towards a rec center for our residents that I know my kids and I are extremely excited about. I just wanted you guys to know that the work you have done over the last few years hasn't went unnoticed or unappreciated. Thank you for everything. Without the 1% sales tax, none of the above would have been possible. I also want to tell Jason Woody that I appreciate his hard work obtaining almost $3 million grants for the park and rec over the last year. You're definitely a great asset to the community. Thanks for taking the time to read this. Brad Gray.
The next one is signed by May and Bob Caston.
To the Wood River mayor and council members. As members of the committee that worked to pass the 1% sales tax, we support the importance of building the new recreation center. Two years ago, we talked to many citizens of Wood River about the benefits of passing the 1% sales tax for our city. We explained how the revenue could be used for infrastructure work, floodplain relief, and city improvements. However, as we spoke to citizens, the biggest interest point for the tax proposal was the hope of building a new recreation center with activities and facilities to benefit all ages. Income from the continuing 1% sales tax revenue, 60% coming from non-residents, and being awarded the $2.5 million state grant, Shidner, and the other needed city projects, all feasible, as payments for the projects will be spread out over many years, while the city continues to accrue the income that the 1% tax will generate. Wood River is very fortunate that our citizens voted to pass the sales tax and make these projects possible. During the recent election, we heard how candidates wanted to improve Wood River and draw new business and people to our city. Building a new rec center is certainly a positive step and a vote in good faith for our city's future growth. We have heard from many people about the fond memories they have- they have of time spent at the roundhouse during their youth. Now our city needs something to offer our current and future youth and the young at heart. They also deserve a place to gather with friends and participate in activities to make the same fond memories. Building a new rec center next to the current roundhouse will give everyone a chance to remember the past and look to the future of Wood River. We ask you to give this important matter the consideration that it deserves. Thank you. May and Bob Caston. May, 50-year resident of Wood River. Bob, lifelong resident of Wood River and member of the Park and Rec Board.
The next one is from Brandy Womack. I have had the privilege of knowing Sonia Hagaman for about five years now. She is a wonderful role model to men and women as well as children. Sonia is very active in the community. She is incredibly organized and very creative. She has taken on many roles in the years I have known her and has soared in all of them. Sonia is a generous person. She always donates her time, which is very precious, since she has a family of her own, goods and anything else possible. She is very trustworthy. Children are the most precious things we have in our lives. She is trusted with being a leader of a Girl Scout troop and does an amazing job at it. I would highly recommend Sonia Hagaman to be a part of the city council. Thanks, Brandy. The next one is from Scott Minor. What is being done here tonight is egregious, without reason and totally unnecessary. The appointment of a new council member should be left to the incoming mayor and city council. This blatant power grab by a defeated mayor and councilman is disturbing and will set the standard moving forward. On April 6th, voters spoke, and they spoke very clearly. They voted against entrenched politics. They voted against politicians who were appointed to their positions purely because they are friends with Cheryl McGuire. The appointment of a city council member tonight is a slap in the face to all voters that chose a different path. Those voters should have their voices heard. This appointment must be tabled until after the new mayor and city council are sworn in. It only makes sense. Any new city council member appointed here tonight will never be taken seriously. They will always be working under a cloud of suspicion. Why were they appointed so suddenly? In what backroom meeting was their name pulled out of a hat? That is not fair to the city nor to that person. In only two weeks' time, there will be a new mayor and a new city council. A decision as important as the appointment of a new city council member should not be rushed through so as to simply install an ally of the mayor in office. It must be a thoughtful process, residents are talked to, possible candidates are interviewed, et cetera. I would ask those that plan to vote in favor of this appointment to reconsider and allow the process to play out in a fair and just manner. Sincerely, Scott Minor. The next one is from Ben Baumkamp. I wanted to email you in regards to the rec center debate. I would like to express my undying support for the Wood River Recreation Center and the kids in our community. As someone who has lived in Wood River for 47 years, growing up playing sports through the rec programs, swimming at both pools, and working for the recs, this city has always and needs to have a place for our children to go. I attended the planning meetings to try and solve the dilemma when the pool had to be removed and our community was in uproar. Through these brainstorming sessions, the 1% sales tax was born. This sales tax was pushed to help our youth have some place to go, just like the previous generations. It is hypocritical to take away from our children when previous generations always had places to go. I love Wood River, and anyone that knows me knows that I take pride in this community and making it better. The new sales tax, along with the grant money we received, allows us to provide that new spot for generations to come. Now let's start digging. Benji Baumkamp. Teresa Tonias, I'm sorry if I say that wrong. I would like to express concern over the possible appointment to city council of Sonia by Cheryl McGuire. Cheryl is on her way out, and appointing her friend to city council is directly against what the citizens of Wood River want. You can see that clearly in the recent votes for city council members. Sonia has been a cheerleader and defendant of Cheryl all through the campaign, even when her excessive praise of Cheryl was questioned as excessive. It was apparent there was a motivation behind her continual defense of Cheryl. It was so excessive, it was apparent there was something motivating the blind loyalty. It is apparent there was some promise of appointment to some position within the city. Sonia is everything the city does not need. The citizens do not want Cheryl as mayor. They do not want her friend on city council. To allow Cheryl to nominate someone who doesn't even reside in Wood River, who has an interest in projects that the citizens voted against, goes against everything the citizens of Wood River voted for and continually asked for. If the best interests of Wood River were really being considered, perhaps the person who came in third or fourth in the recent election should be appointed, not some inexperienced crony of the ex-mayor. What exactly is Cheryl trying to accomplish? She seems to be trying very hard to keep her nose, fingers in the business of Wood River. An audit of the finances, contracts awarded, et cetera, is in order. Thank you, Teresa. The next one is from Rosalie Hubner. The voting citizens of Wood River spoke loud and clear that the roundhouse is to be saved and preserved for the future. The voters did not show much support in building a recreational center. I don't support the building of a recreational center at this time, as there are questions that cannot be answered at this time. The current voted area designated by a majority of council members is not large enough to support a great recreational center. $2 million will not build much of a center, even with money from the 1% tax increase approved by the voting citizens. I don't remember the city council members announcing they had investigated other areas to build a recreational center, but I think it should have been done. This city has several areas with open land that could be studied for a site. On Ninth Street and Wesley Drive, there is a skate park already in existence that is not used very often on Wesley Drive. Not far from that area is the top-notch golf- some will say the Ninth Street area is for the- for the to-be-new pond to hold stormwater. Even with that, there is room for other buildings. On the west side of the current recreational center, perhaps the city could buy that area and then connect it to already-owned city property. The businesses along that street don't seem to last very long. Our current high school is sadly way outdated and will have to be replaced in the future. I don't think the district can afford to disregard the annex building and the stadium area and move somewhere else. I know of one city council member who is also on the high school board of education. Maybe he can provide some insight of any possible plans for the school. In the census 10 years ago, the city had a population of about 10,000. If it had stayed steady, taxpayers cannot afford a new recreational center at this time. To attract new families, taxpayers need to have streets, sewers, schools in top condition. I am appealing to you, the city council, to listen to the vote of the citizens and place this matter on the table for further study. Study can and should continue for a great recreational center if it can be supported and cared for. Thank you, Rosalie Hubner. Chris Stanley. I would like to recommend Sonia Hagaman as my replacement. I feel she would be a huge asset to the council. Sonia has been on a city board for many years and very active in the community, as well as a public administration degree. Next is Emily Carlton. I am writing to you to express my feelings toward Sonia Hagaman speaking at tonight's city council meeting. I stand with Sonia and support her. She is a positive woman, raising two young children in Wood River, and supports things that I support. I believe her speaking tonight at the meeting will be a positive voice from a lot of citizens who are raising children in our community. We all deserve a right to be heard. Thank you, Emily Carlton. The next one is from Sharon Cadell. It is disappointing that in the 14 years I served as councilwoman on the Wood River City Council, I have never witnessed any mayor exit their position and propel their agenda, while disregarding the will of the people and placing a council member without giving time and thought to all the council, and allowing the vetting process to all. Sincerely, Sharon Cadell. The next one is Nadia Bacon and family. I have been a resident of the city of Wood River for over 60 years, and I am concerned about the recent events on the part of the current mayor and two of her council members. As I understand it, Mayor McGuire, Councilman Stanley, and Councilman Duncan took it upon themselves to have a private meeting at the VFW to discuss city business. That, in fact, is a clear violation of the Open Meetings Act and should be investigated thoroughly. If at such time violations are found, those responsible should be held accountable. It is also my understanding that personnel changes were discussed at this meeting in the way of firing the city manager, Jim Schneider, and hiring Councilman Anderson's brother, Mr. Kyle Anderson, to file- to fill the position and to appoint someone in Councilman Stanley's place. I am curious, though, as to when a resigning councilman gets to make a choice and who replaces him. It's not fair to the people who just ran on the April 6th, 2021 ballot and spent money for signs and wanted to actually be on the council. The people on the ballot should be given first choice. Since Mayor McGuire is in the lame duck section of her time as mayor, these issues at the very least should be discussed with the incoming mayor, Mr. Stalkup, who is still on the city board until the swearing-in of the new members. Mayor McGuire is obviously trying to make the transition harder for the new mayor, even after the citizens of Wood River have made their choice clear. Mayor McGuire is also still pushing for the rec center, when that has also been voted against, twice. Mayor McGuire needs to put the citizens of Wood River in front of her personal agenda. Mayor McGuire is vindictive and unethical, and that is why the people so loudly voted her out. I ask Mayor McGuire to accept the citizens' decision and to gracefully resign her position as mayor. I am very hesitant on signing this letter for fear of any repercussions against my family and I. Isn't that sad in this day and age to have to worry about that from a public official? The next one is from Helen Kraus. All of this talk about Mayor McGuire is a bunch of hogwash. Tom and Jeremy couldn't win an honest election without- Tom and Jeremy couldn't win an honest election without badmouthing other candidates. The mayor has never said anything about U2. She ran a clean election. Now let's get down to what I really want to say. This fight or battle is over a recreational center. Mayor Maguire gets the blame for this. I remember when I was chairman of Building and Zoning and Mayor Fred Eufort showed me where he wanted to build a rec center for the citizens of Wood River. The talk and plans were already started long before Cheryl became mayor. But something happened to the pool that would cost over a million dollars to fix and repair. They made the decision to quit spending good money after bad and tore it down. As a daily user of that pool, I was truly disappointed that happened, but I understood. Now they decided to build the rec center that Mayor Eufort wanted so that everyone could use year-round. This would be a wonderful idea for the citizens of Wood River. There was a count made and people wanted to have a rec center by the count of three to one. A small amount of people do not want the rec center and they are the ones that went out and voted for Tom Stalcup and Jeremy Plank. Where were the citizens that want the rec center when it came time to vote? That can't be addressed now and the vote is over and you will live with the outcome. I have heard that there will be a vote on a new council person. I have known Sonia Hagaman since she was a young girl. She is the kind of councilwoman the city needs. She is a lifelong resident of Wood River and truly cares about the citizens of Wood River. I would love to see Wood River flourish, but I also see that if you continue on this road, there will be no new families with working parents who are going to move into Wood River, as there is nothing for children to do. The next one is from Jean Bruce. You could not find a better person than Sonia Hagaman to serve on the city council. She not only has a degree in public administration, but is a dedicated volunteer who serves on a city commission, is a Girl Scout leader, active in her church, and promotes Wood River businesses. She's young, smart, honest, and truthful. And the next one is from Brittany Flycicky. Again, I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong. I have been a Wood River resident for over ten years now. I have personally known Mrs. Sonia Hagaman for over four years. Sonia and I met when our daughter started Girl Scouts together. Even though we were not leaders, she and I were both very involved with the troops and because of that, we have become friends and are both now troop leaders for our daughter's scout troop. I have admired Sonia from the first day I met her. Sonia is a dedicated mother, wife, friend, coach, and employee. She puts her heart and soul into everything she does and dedicate so much of her time doing volunteer work for her church, her children's school, for miscellaneous sports her children are involved in, et cetera. She is always giving her time to others. I wanted to personally tell you that I think you have picked an amazing lady for the council member position. She cares about our city tremendously and I think she will be a great asset for the city. I am a proud citizen knowing she will have a say in the good of our community. And that is all of the comments that were emailed in to be read. So the only thing left would be reports or comments from city officials?
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to make a comment. This is Councilman Anderson. And I would just like to start off by saying thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. I appreciate your opinions and we've been listening. Thank you also to the mayor and the other city council members for my time on the council. Thank the city employees and the citizens for the support I've been given while I've done this difficult job. I want to say that I'm saddened by the tone of the last year, the last year and a half in our city. And in my opinion, that's the biggest issue facing us today and I hope somehow we can heal and move forward. But today, we're going to vote on a few items that were started in motion before I became a member of the council. It was decided back sometime in 2018, I believe, by the council, a vote, to put a ballot issue on the, during the election, to pass a 1% sales tax to fund projects the city and the public had identified. A rec center, among other things, were those, among those projects identified. Also identified were ways to pay for it. Public-private partnerships, grants, and the 1% sales tax. These avenues were all explored. In April of 2019, the citizens of Wood River voted to pass that sales tax for the purpose of completing these otherwise unattainable projects. The consensus of the council at that time was to have the parking rec director apply for the $2.5 million park grant. There was also a referendum that was put on the ballot in November of 2020 to save the Roundhouse and stop the rec spending, falsely linking the two projects to as one project. The council, which I was part of at that time, voted four to one to save the Roundhouse. The vote on the referendum was overwhelming to save the Roundhouse, I mean, stop the rec center. I mean, I'm not sure what that meant. And that's what I heard from the citizens during this campaign, as I knocked on the door. So I'm not going to argue that anymore, but this brings us to today. And we have in front of us an agreement for a two-and-a-half-million-dollar grant for the city to build a rec center for our children. And remember, this application was approved by a previous council vote. And this is to provide generations of, future generations, activities that our towns can be proud to say, you know, they had the same memories that we all had as children growing up here. And also at the time of the grant application, the council had the overwhelming support of most every department head, all the area mayors, and all the civic leaders. They all wrote letters and supported this and said, you heard some of them tonight, and all how great this was going to be for Wood River. Now, some may feel differently now, and that's their right. But to me, the only thing that has changed is we now have a sales tax that has outperformed expectations and $2.5 million in free money. I'm going to say it again. $2.5 million in free money. This money will help us provide the type of future our city owes our children. The timing of this grant issuance is now and needs to be addressed immediately. So tonight, I'm voting to further the wishes of our previous councils, our political leaders and the city's department heads, and those voters who voted in an April 2019 election to pass the 1% sales tax to get these funds go, or get these projects go. I understand many may disagree, and that's okay, but I ask that we respect each other's opinions. The other issue before the council is the appointment of Sonia Hagaman. Sonia is a lifelong Wood River resident who's been disparaged here tonight by some. That just baffles me that as a town that we would do that to one of our, one of our own. But I feel she'll be an asset to this council and I fully support her nomination. She has skin in the game. She's a parent to young children and she has an eye to the future for the city's needs. And I'm proud to say I support Sonia Hagaman for this nomination. I'm leaving the council now and I hope that we can come together somehow. Remember, you might not like what I just said, but I respect your opinions and I really hope you respect mine. And maybe I'll see you at pumpout. Thank you.
And just to note, there is not a time limit on city officials' comments. That is just for citizen comments, per city code. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Brad Wells, police chief. Today, April 19th, 2021, I sent an email to Mayor Maguire. The media, city officials, and the Madison County State's attorney was copied on the email. I have a copy of the email and a copy of the body camera video and audio submitted under report number 21-6078 at the Wood River Police Department. I'd like both copies submitted into the record of this meeting. It is my perception of what Mayor Maguire told Sergeant Gigan at the police department on April 17th, 2021, which is caught on video and audio, as a threat to my position of police chief and continued disruption of the police department. What she is doing is a detriment to the public safety of the city of Wood River. I wasn't going to speak on the rec center, but since my friend, Mr. Donahue, brought my name into the mix, for the record, I do support a rec center. I'm 100% in favor of children's activities. But as a citizen of this town, I feel the decision should be given to the new council when seated. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are there any other city officials or comments from city officials?
Stacy, I'd like to make a comment. This is Tom.
Okay, Tom. Sure, your turn.
I'm not sure why the items on this agenda were forced to be voted on tonight. A responsible council would make sure all council people are informed and not force multiple issues upon our outgoing council, who apparently do not care the outcome of these issues and how they will affect the citizens of Wood River, who they are supposed to be representing. I'm disappointed in this. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. What we have next is item seven on the agenda.
Approval of resuming spending on the recreation center project.
Motion, Anderson.
Duncan, second.
Item seven has been moved and seconded. In December, the city council suspended spending on the rec center after the advisory vote in November. However, since that time, the city was awarded the two-and-a-half-million-dollar grant for the rec center, which puts this recreation center back into play financially. And that's why this, this approval of the rec center spending is on the agenda.
I have a comment. I move to table this issue. I feel this matter is up to the newly-elected council to decide. As proven in the vote of November 2020, the citizens overwhelmingly voted to stop spending on the rec center. The newly-elected council should be the decision-maker on this, not the outgoing lame-duck council. I ask for a second for this table.
Is there a second for this motion? Seeing none, this motion dies for lack of a second. Now we're back to the original motion.
Leroy's a bum.
Madam clerk, will you call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan? Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
No.
Maguire?
Yes.
Approval of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021-22 budget to increase the rec center line item within the 1% non-home rule sales tax fund by $414,103.80 to begin the rec center design process.
Anderson, motion.
Duncan, second.
Item eight has been moved and seconded. Originally, $450,000 was budgeted for the design of the recreation center. This money now has been put back into the budget from the 1% sales tax fund. The design is necessary to meet the requirements of the timeline for this grant that was awarded by the state. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. This is Tom.
Go ahead.
I move to table this issue. I feel this issue is up to the newly-elected council to be decided. As proven, proven in the vote of November 2020, the citizens overwhelmingly voted to stop spending on the rec center. The newly-elected council should be the decision-maker on this and not the outgoing council. I ask for a question, for a second on this table.
Is there a second to table this motion? Seeing none, this motion to table dies for lack of a second. Now back to the original motion. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
No.
Maguire?
Yes. Item nine, please.
Approval of an ordinance authorizing execution of a park grant agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources and the city of Wood River for two-and-a-half million dollars for construction of a recreation center.
Leroy's a bum.
If you, if I could interject, Mayor, to the person running our computer, that's too outburst by that number. If you could please remove them. Would you like me to proceed to item nine, Mayor?
Yes, please do.
Oh, I did. I need a motion and a second, I'm sorry.
Anderson, motion.
Item nine has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment. This is Tom. I move to table this issue. Reason is stated on page two of the grant agreement between the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources and the city of Wood River, line 1.4. The timeline will start from the date of the last signature. When decided, the signature should come from the newly-elected mayor, which is sworn in on May 3rd. There is no rush for this outgoing council to sign this document. Once the signature is added to this document, the clock starts ticking and you have two years to use this $2.5 million. I move to table number nine and ask for a second.
Motion to be, to table has been moved. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Madam clerk, if you'll return to item nine, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Something happened to the phone, I don't know what it was.
Okay. We need a vote from you on item number nine.
Yes.
Stalcup?
No.
Maguire?
Yes. Item 10, please.
Approval of a recommendation to award the 2021-2022 MFT maintenance bids as submitted by the Public Works Director.
Anderson, motion.
Duncan, second.
Item 10 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Call the roll, please. Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes. Item 11, please.
Approval of a proclamation declaring May as Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Anderson, motion.
Duncan, second.
Item 11 has been moved and seconded. The proclamation is asking that people become aware of motorcycles and pay attention as the spring is coming and they are out on the road. Are there any other questions or comments? Madam clerk, call the roll, please.
Anderson?
Are there any questions or comments? Madam clerk, call the roll, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes. Item 12, please.
Approval of a recommendation from Mayor McGuire to appoint Sonya Hagaman to serve as councilwoman to fill the unexpired term of Councilman Chris Stanley.
Anderson, motion.
Duncan, second.
Item 12 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, this is Tom. I move to table this recommendation because the newly elected council should have the right to place and fill the vacant seat. There needs to be time and study of candidates for the future work of the newly elected council. There is no rush. In the past, we have taken weeks to find study and vote on new council members. I don't know why the rush now. I move to table number 12 and ask for a second.
Item 12 has been moved to table. Is there a second to table this motion? Seeing there's not a second, this motion to table dies for lack of a second. Now back to item 12. I do have a comment. Sonya Hagaman was the recommendation of Chris Stanley to fulfill his term. When I first brought forth Tom Stalcup's name to be appointed to a council seat, I did so over two other council candidates because he was the next choice of the late mayor should there ever be a council position open. The same is the premise of this motion tonight and I'm honoring the request of former Councilman Stanley. Sonya is active in her community. She has served on the park and rec board for over 20 years. She has coached softball, volleyball, baseball, soccer. She's a Girl Scout leader. She's active in civic organizations. She is active in her church. Her qualifications are impeccable. She is a deputy circuit clerk of Madison County. She has her bachelor's degree in public administration and she is getting her master's degree in public administration. And I think she would be an excellent choice and this was Councilman, former Councilman Stanley's recommendation. Madam clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor, I have a comment. This is Tom. Can I have my comment?
Yes, please do.
Unlike, unlike Mayor Euforth's, when he passed away, I, I just, I just don't know what to say to that comment that you just made. We just went through an election. We had several candidates that put time, effort, just sweat into it. I have nothing against Sonya Hagaman, but I think it's the right of the, of the council to go through and study each candidate. We haven't had candidates given to choose from the council like we always have in the past. And I think that Sonya's being run right into this council with no consideration of anybody else that wants to be on the council. And I think it's sad that you brought that, my situation up because that's not, that's not totally true.
Well, it's a parallel situation and the next person that had the most amount of votes was Councilman Anderson. So he could have been appointed to the seat, but former Councilman Stanley recommended Sonya Hagaman, so that's.
And there again, it should be the choice of the newly elected council.
Thank you for your comments. Madam clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Stalcup?
No.
McGuire?
Yes. Item 13, please.
City Clerk Stacy Erman will administer the oath of office to newly appointed Councilwoman Sonya Hagaman.
I state your name.
I, Sonya Hagaman.
Having been appointed to the office of city council.
Having been appointed to the office of city council.
In the city of Wood River.
In the city of Wood River.
In the county of Madison.
In the county of Madison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council.
Of the office of city council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Is there any old business? Is there any new business? And I do have a statement under new business. I've heard the comments tonight. They are some of the same people who have commented all year because they were part of the group that wanted to save the Roundhouse. The city moved forward the resolution stating that the Roundhouse is staying as is. There's money budgeted to repair the Roundhouse. The Roundhouse is not going away. The language in the grant for the recreation center was for the construction of the recreation center only. Because of the success of this 1% sales tax fund, there is money for building the rec center. There's money for sewer separation. There's money for friendly leafs. There's money for all the projects the citizens said they wanted to go forward. This grant for this recreation center has timelines and if this money is left on the table, it is highly unlikely that the city of Wood River will ever get a grant for the mag, this magnitude for the quality of life for the people of Wood River. Out of the 17 cities that were awarded this grant, Wood River was the only city outside the Chicago area that received this maximum grant. And it was the only one downstate. This center will be a benefit to the citizens and the people of Wood River for decades Are there any other comments? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Turn the mute off. We've been doing it for a second.